Welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Kingman City Council at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Could we have a roll call, please, Annie?
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Linganfelter?
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson is excused this evening. Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins? Councilmember Wade?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we're fortunate to have with us Pastor Peter Ernst of the Kingman Family Bible Church, who will give our invocation. Thank you Pastor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for asking. Precious Lord and Heavenly Father, thank you for your benevolent, loving kindness to us as a people and as a nation. We know that we have strayed from your law and your precepts and have chosen to follow our own ways, using our own thinking, choosing our own preferences. As a result, we have collectively sown a wind and have reaped a whirlwind. Our nation is in trouble. Wherever we look, we see anarchy, treason, lawlessness, and hatred for our fellow man. We understand what we so we root. Lead us as a people, as a nation, as a community and citizens of Kingman, Arizona, to think right, not by submitting your word to our thinking, but our thinking to your word. This moment in time is our divine opportunity to recalibrate our thinking and our decisions and behavior to godliness. We pray for wisdom for our mayor and for our each city council member, our police chief and police department, our fire chief and first responders. We pray for those who protect us and do what government has been given and tasked for them to do by divi- divine fiat by Almighty God, to protect and defend its citizenry from harm. And for those bent on our nation's destruction, as they seek to roll a stone, Lord, would you cause that stone to roll back on them? For those who seek to dig a pit for good men and women to fall into, would you, in your divine providence, cause them to fall into it themselves? That's for protection, our restitution and Bill of Rights, our nation's flag, representing the countless fallen who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Father God, may their sacrifice not be paid in vain, trading blood for their em- for the empty promises of socialism, communism, or any other ism that rejects the promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We believe with all of our hearts that to live in America is a great privilege and honor, and to whom much is given, much will be required. And so, Lord God, please give wisdom, consensus, agreement, and understanding to our city council as they deliberate and make decisions that ultimately affect every citizen of Kingman, Arizona. And lastly, Father God, we pray, thanking you for your patience and loving kindness and grace. You've been evidently poured out on us as a people. When we say, at the end of every speech, "God bless America," ultimately, what you require from and of us as a people is that our greatest desire is your presence, your blessing and favor, not only in the public marketplace, but also in our own individual lives. Give us the want to, to seek your face, and to give you once again your rightful place in the schoolhouse, in the White House, in the courthouse, and in our own homes, as we ultimately united, be united as one nation under God. In Jesus' name, we pray this. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Could you please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 384310383 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed considered in decisions made relating their, their, or their two. But first, we have the call to the public. This is a virtual meeting and in-person attendance is suspended for this meeting. And due to COVID-19, we are holding it through technological means. Those residents who wished to address the council during the call to the public portion of the agenda could either submit written comments or register to speak on the phone or Zoom. All written comments and requests to speak must be submitted or were submitted by 9:00 AM on September 1, 2020, by emailing cityclerk@cityofkingman.gov or dropping, dropping off handwritten comments at the main city complex. Those that wish to address the council by telephone, pre-registered by emailing cityclerk@cityofkingman.gov and providing their name, address, telephone number, and email. Once registered, they were sent a link with additional instructions. Only those who pre-registered will be admitted to the meeting. Each speaker will be given three minutes to comment, and then they will be removed as to move to the next speaker in queue. The total of 20 minutes is allotted for this call to the public portion of the agenda. All comments shared with the council are made a part of the public records. Members of the public can watch or listen to this meeting via Channel 4 or on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofkingman. Now, this evening, I wanted to mention that that 20 minutes for comments will not include the time that it takes to technologically transition one speaker to the other. So that, that will just, Annie's going to take care of that, and that won't be part of the 20 minutes. Also, I wanted to mention that we have had some written comments, and I'm, I'm going to ask Annie to give us a summary of the written comments that were sent in. Again, with the precedence already set, been asked to not read all of these comments, but we will summarize these and then allow the speakers to have their three minutes. Annie, could you do that for us?
Yes, we received a total of 16 written comments that were shared with council this morning after the deadline had passed. Those comments were six that were in support of the mask mandate and 10 that were in opposition of the mask mandate.
And I imagine that the council has had time to read all of these. I have read them all, and also, they will be, they are part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes of this meeting when published. Is that correct, Annie?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I really appreciate the work that the city has done, the city staff, Annie and, and Manager Foggan and everyone involved in getting our Zoom technology, just keeping and proving it, so that now we can allow the public speakers to come online and speak with us, one at a time. And so, I have a list of the speakers, and we have 14 speakers that have requested to talk with us or speak to us. And again, we're going to start at, at the way that they came in. And the first speaker, are you ready, Annie?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, the first speaker tonight, we're going to ask each speaker to give their name and city in which they are representing, and first speaker is Representative Regina Cobb.
Representative Cobb has been entered into the meeting.
I don't see her on the screen. Representative Cobb, are you there?
Hi, this is Gina.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi Gina, this is Jen Miles. We, you, you have been entered into the meeting, we can all hear you. And so, you will have three minutes to share your thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Give your name and city that you are representing.
I'm Regina Cobb, I'm State Representative Regina Cobb, I'm in District 5 in Kingman, Arizona, 921 Crestwood Lane. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me the time to address you. I realize you can't respond, which is unfortunate. I feel privileged to be one of the citizens in the 20-minute limitation. I stand in opposition to the original proclamation and its continuation of the mask mandate until 2021, and also the enforcement. This afternoon, I received an unofficial AG opinion according to ARS 4119387. Due to time constraints, in summary, it does not appear that the statute of the governor, the statute or the governor's executive order preemptes the city's own requirements. ARS 26311A and B must be read in harmony, expressly states that the mayor's emergency declaration must be authorized by ordinance or resolution, although does not mention that. It is illogical to read Section A as required, requiring I may follow local ordinances or resolutions when declaring a local emergency, but then argue that local ordinances and resolutions need not to be followed when making a proclamation pursuant to that emergency declaration. Therefore, the declaration of emergency must conform to the requirements of the Kingman ordinance. They also go on to state the enforceability of the mayor's proclamation could not be, could be problematic after 72 hours. For example, someone cited for a violation of the mayor's proclamation could reasonably point to the fact that the process required by Kingman Code was not followed as a good faith defense in the prosecution. Secondly, what emergency do we have at this point? Data dashboard indicates death and cases are down to the lowest number since we started recording data. The Arizona RNOT is the lowest in the country, 50th, that means spread is nonexistent. The county data is skewed due to the unavailability of tests and the type of patients tested. DHS is working with me to evaluate that dat- that data and the methodology and determining a new method of data. Let's put this into perspective. COVID has approximately COVID-like symptoms, 6 million, 183 deaths, which CDC came out yesterday and said it was overinflated. Heart disease has 1.5 million diagnosed a year and 900,000 deaths a year. Skin cancer, squamous cell carcinoma, there's 900, 9,500 diagnosed a day and 15,000 deaths a year. Should we mandate no fatty acids or the entire population wear hats and sunscreen? I have heard from many local citizens of how divisive this proclamation has been to our community. Are discrimination happening to those that cannot wear masks? When does the government have the right to interfere with our personal health? When do we decide that an adult is not allowed to have a personal responsibility? This is a blatant violation of our constitutional rights and civil liberties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Who's the next speaker? Oh. Annie, I have, the next speaker is, I know Jennifer Es-
Mayor, I'm not showing-
But is she on the line?
I am not showing that Ms. Esposito has registered. I don't have her phone number in the waiting room, so if you want to go on to the next person, I know she was having issues getting connected, so hopefully she can get back.
Okay. The next speaker would be Amanda Kaufman. Amanda Kaufman.
Ms. Kaufman has been entered into the meeting.
Hello, Ms. Kaufman, could you please give us your name and city you're representing? And proceed to comment with your three minutes. Ms. Kaufman?
It looks like she may be having issues unmuting, I'm going to send her-
I see that she's muted, yeah. Can you unmute your connection?
Six. How, okay, pound instead of, sorry, sorry about that. Yep, Amanda Kaufman, I'm at 3824 Pax Saddle Road, and I'm at Kingman. Good afternoon, Mayor Miles and council. As an employer, business owner, and resident of the city of Kingman, I am surprised that I find myself here before the council. ARS 38231 contains the oath of office that each of you have taken to defend the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the state of Arizona, that each of you will bear true faith and allegiance to these, and you will each faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of office. I cannot wrap my head around the fact that the city is violating its own codes, and the city attorney is saying it is okay to just let the mayor do it. The Governor's Executive Order 2020-40 dated June 17th specifically gave powers to cities and towns, not mayors, regarding the wearing of face coverings. However, the mayor acted against the governor's orders and issued an emergency proclamation and has yet, after two months, to bring this topic to council for discussion or to be heard by the constituents. City Code Section 6-29 says, "The orders authorized in Section 628 shall remain in effect until rescinded by the mayor, but for a period not to exceed 72 hours from the time they became effective unless approved by the common council." The city attorney has said our codes are in conflict with state statutes and has said that this since March of this year, that he has yet to provide any specific ARS in conflict. In fact, five months have passed, and he has yet to provide a recommendation on the changes necessary before the council. The city is skirting a civil rights violation of due process. Understanding the mayor's frustration with reactions to her mandates is still no excuse to take away the rights of the constituents. To work in a vacuum and not involve the council with city matters is perplexing enough, but to tell the public they will not be heard and to discount their concerns is a blatant disregard to her own civil rights. To paraphrase the specific concerns brought to the council on August 18th in her own words and then refer to these concerns as things, along with the tone and body language as presented, is clearly an act of not being impartial to the duties of office. Acting in direct violation of established Kingman Code and not calling a council meeting to discuss the mayor's actions is autocratic, raises suspicion of intent, and questions the transparency of her conduct in office and conduct by the city of Kingman as a whole. If the mayor continues to not involve the council in city matters and not allow constituents to speak their concerns to the council, then I respectfully ask that the city seek outside legal opinion to review the actions of the mayor, the city attorney, and the city manager as it pertains to its violations of due process before a lawsuit is imposed against the city and its taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Janet Grippy.
Mayor Miles, Jennifer Esposito has been able to connect. Did you want to go back and allow her-
We'll go back to her. Yeah.
Ms. Esposito has been entered into the meeting.
I see that, but she's also muted. She appears to be muted.
I have requested that she unmute.
Outside legal opinion to review the actions of the mayor. The city attorney-
Ms. Esposito?
Yes.
Ms. Esposito, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Could you please give- We do.
Hello?
Could you give us your name? Can you hear us?
I, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, could you give us your, the name, your city, and your, then start with your three minutes?
Okay, thank you, yes. This is Jennifer Esposito, writing candidate for District 4 County Supervisor, living in New Kingman. Mayor and council, I am not particularly concerned with the expired mask proclamation, which technically now exists only in the mayor's overactive imagination. Any thinking person with an IQ higher than a potato can read and understand both city ordinance 6-29 and Arizona revised statutes 26-307, which was specifically referenced in Governor Ducey's Executive Order 2020-40. The authority to make orders, rules, and regulations in an emergency is vested solely in the quote "governing body" and not in the mayor, who has thus far made the rest of you irrelevant. What concerns me greatly, however, is the obvious incompetence of the city attorney. He has consistently given bad legal advice-
Uh, Ms. Esposito- Ms. Esposito-
And with the exception of Vice Mayor Linganfelter, the rest of you seem content with this dysfunctional arrangement. The people of Kingman deserve to know where each of you stands, not only on mandating the public use of a medical device, but also where you stand on the mayor's disregard of and contempt for the laws that you all swore an oath to uphold. You appear complicit in her anarchy, and your silence is deafening. Are you actually content to let Mayor Miles bully local businesses and destroy the city's reputation? In times of crisis, the public looks to the derelict officials for leadership, but it's been noticeably lacking throughout this manufactured emergency. The Constitution guarantees us a republic form of government, not an autocracy run by an apparently unhinged megalomaniac. Lastly, can you confirm or deny the rumor that $80,000 of municipal swimming pool-
That's enough. Please stop it. I think it's important for the public to understand that there are boundaries to address the council, and it is not a forum to attack any of us, including me, but any of us. And that was out of the bounds, so I want to move on.
This is Vice Mayor Linganfelter, thank you for saying that, I was just about to chime in to say that people cannot just use this as a, as a platform to bash people, that's not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. Okay, so I think we are again going to Janet Grippy.
Ms. Grippy has been entered into the meeting.
She needs to unmute.
I have sent her a request to unmute.
Okay, am I there?
Good evening, Ms. Grippy. Good, uh, good evening.
Am I there?
Yes, can you hear us?
Hello. Hello, Mayor Miles and council, my name is Janet Grippy. Can you hear me?
Could you tell us the city, yes, could you give us your name, your city, and your three minutes?
I'm Mayor Miles and council, my name is Janet Grippy. I'm having some problems.
Ms. Grippy, we're going to need you to mute whatever audio is in your background because it's providing feedback.
I'm having some problems.
Ms. Grippy, we're going to need you to mute whatever audio is in your background because you're providing feedback.
Okay, I don't know what's happening here.
It sounds like you're listening to this stream at the same time, so you're going to have to end that in order to be able to hear. You're going to have to end that in order to be able to hear.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Could you give your name? Your city? Oh, there's still background.
My name is Janet Grippy, I'm from Lake Havasu City. I don't know why it keeps- I don't know what's going on.
Ms. Grippy, you're going to need to stop whatever light speed the whole facility needs to-
I don't have anything else on. Okay, there, is that? Is it going now? I don't, I literally have nothing else on. Okay, there, is that? Is it going now? I don't, I literally have nothing else on. Okay, is it working? Is it going now? I don't-
I'm going to put you back into the waiting room and read admit you. Mayor Miles?
Yes ma'am.
I'm going to see if muting your line, which I keep open, will help with the feedback.
Okay.
I'm going to see if muting your line, which I keep open, will help with the feedback.
Okay.
I'm going to see if muting your line, which I keep open, will help with the feedback.
Okay.
It's not correcting the issue.
So, Mayor, let's have her make her comment. I, when she speaks into the phone, I think we can get the message.
Okay, good idea, thank you, Manager. Ms. Grippy?
Can you hear me?
Why don't you go ahead, yeah, go ahead and make your comment.
So you can hear me?
Yes, actually-
Okay.
You made it clear now.
Okay, so I don't know what happened, okay. Mayor Miles and council, we are not in a health crisis. There is no justification for business and school and recreation shutdowns here or mandatory wearing of face coverings in public. The CDC website now says only 6% of 153,504 deaths in the United States are directly attributed to COVID-19. There is no pandemic. Immediately stop controlling free citizens with irrational, unreasonable, universal mandates. Officials have overstepped their authority. Let's follow the money, shall we? Jean Bishop says there's been quite a bit of money that have been available to Mojave County that would not be available without this emergency order. Mojave County Public Health Director Denise Burley said that the Department of Health and Human Services will provide 1,000 tests for testing in Kingman. How much money is Kingman getting for that? Governor Ducey sits on the Board of Directors at TGEN, the COVID-tested com- testing company, how much money is he getting? How many of you city council members, mayors, governors, and politicians are business owners who made money from the PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, which is COVID-19 money? COVID-19 federal financial aid will likely be tied for years to a county's or state's positive tests, hospitalizations, and death polls. It is about the money, money over humanity. COVID-19 testing is down, so the coun- county is pushing testing to keep the numbers up. That seems to be the agenda. Now it's the flu vaccine they are pushing clearly to keep the numbers up. More vaccines, more money. Again, money over humanity. It seems the goal, whether it's COVID-19 or the current flu shot push, is to keep the numbers up, to keep the state of emergency going, which includes lockdowns and ma- mask proclamations. How do you feel about being complicit in the greatest hoax ever perpetuated on the American people, and you're all a part of it? Take, uh, take the masks off, open the city, let owners of businesses do what they need to, to feed their families. Take the masks off, quit muzzling and masking the children. The psychological damage you're doing to them is horrible. The opening of the Constitution of the United States of America is "we the people." Well, we the people are here. We, we the people are awake, and we the people will be watching your every move. We the people will not sit back and allow you to take our freedoms and liberties away. Mayor Miles, you may choose money over humanity, but we the people will always choose humanity over money, and you must never, ever forget that. We the people will never stop fighting for humanity, freedom, and liberty, and will not allow for anything less. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, the next, pardon? The next speaker will be Mary Rogers.
We do not have Ms. Rogers on the line.
Okay. Then the next speaker is Jeff Sawen. Good evening, Mr. Sawen. Can you hear us? Mr. Sawen? I see the number.
Hello? Okay, am I good to go?
Hi, Mr. Sawen. Yes, please give your name and city that you are in, and three minutes for your comments.
Thank you, Jeff Sawen. I refer, hold on, let me mute this, it keeps going on and off. Okay, Jeff Sawen, I'm in White Hills, unincorporated in Mojave County, I go to Kingman, I'd say every other day because that's the only place to go. because that's the only place to go from White Hills. Let me just say in opening. When I'm speaking for my wife. I don't know what's going on. Is this feedback still going? Okay. Let me try again. Hopefully, you can hear me. I'm speaking for my wife and my four children. I'm speaking for the fellow anti-communist Kingmanites. I'm speaking so that history will show that we are on the right side of the anti-mask debate. Let me first quote the mayor's press release. She says because of the upcoming Labor Day holiday schools reopening and hybrid options and the upcoming flu system, then she mentioned something about the stresses on the hospital. That is what justifies just randomly, authoritarily, saying we're going to extend the mask mandate until the end of this year. Besides that being a totally unobjective, undefinable, open-ended press release, and I'm assuming the mayor probably didn't put that together because looking at her, I've never met her. I think she's a little smarter than to put out a release like that. That's a compliment, by the way. But let me just go through that real quick. The hospitals being under-stressed. According to HospitalMedicalDirector.com and about every other resource you can look at, hospital occupancy ideally is at eighty-five percent. I'm tired of turning on the news and hearing how they're at eighty percent, eighty-five. Oh, no, no, it's a stress that is scaring people. That's an ideal occupancy. Please bring on the medical director at our local hospital and tell us what the occupancy rate is. Second, you quote or you reference the Arizona Department of Health Services benchmarks and something about manageable COVID-19 positivity rate baseline has been achieved. Another gobbledygook statement. I don't think it was written by the mayor again, possibly the lawyer there. But let's look at what the Arizona Department of Health Services says about total deaths in two thousand nineteen in Mojave County. Three thousand three hundred and forty-seven or two hundred and seventy-nine a month. That's the total deaths last year according to the king that we're reaching out to in Arizona, the Arizona Department of Health Services. Now, what do we have this year so far? Two hundred and seventy-nine a month last year compared to three hundred and twenty-seven this year. Just under seven deaths a month more this year. That's a fact. That's not a statistic. That's a fact. How is there a medical emergency for just under seven more deaths a month this year? Look it up. If you're all sitting there, go ahead and go to the annualized deaths from the Arizona Department of Health Services. Now, let's look into how they come up with the deaths. I'm sorry, am I being cut off?
Your three minutes is up.
Oh, my goodness. That's it? Okay. The data is against you. The facts are against you. I hope you would allow people.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Annie. Next speaker is Ron Danielson.
Mayor, Mr. Danielson, Mr. Brandon, and Mr. Xana are not, have not connected to the Zoom at this time.
Okay, then we'll move on to Bridget Langston.
Ms. Langston has been admitted.
Ms. Langston needs to unmute.
I have requested that she unmute her line. It appears that Ms. Langston has left the meeting. I will watch to see if she tries to reconnect, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Taryn Hatch.
Ms. Hatch has been entered into the meeting.
She needs to unmute. There we go. Hello, Ms. Hatch?
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Yes, please give us your name and your city of residence, and you have three minutes to comment.
Okay, thank you. My name is Taryn Hatch, and I'm a resident of Kingman. I just wanted to express my disappointment in your extension on the mask mandates. I'm not raising my children to live in irrational fear of viruses. They are aware of how their immune systems work. What bothers me is how our representatives don't. If a vaccine can create antibodies, then so can the virus. The lockdowns and social distancing protocols have only prolonged society's ability to gain natural herd immunity that could have ended this pandemic months ago. Mayor Miles believes it is her duty to protect the most vulnerable among us, and it is not. Life is about choices. We all have the right to individual liberty and personal responsibility. We can make choices like smoking, or drinking, or eating poorly that can affect our health. I contend, oh, excuse me. I contend that you are not responsible to protect our health. Your duty is to inform the public of the data, not push publicized COVID science that ignores prior studies saying cloth masks don't work and could be worse for the wearer. According to Dr. Fauci, and I quote, asymptomatic transmission has never been the driver of outbreaks. The driver of outbreaks is always asymptomatic person. So why do we continue with the masks? You are wanting to protect the elderly, yet nursing homes have restricted visits from family while housing COVID-positive patients. The only guarantee in life is death. There is no promise of tomorrow, and every day should be lived like it could be your last. Instead, we have been forced into putting our lives on hold while the authorities figure this virus out. Time we will never get back. Everybody's livelihoods are essential. Children need social interaction with their peers and not to be reprogrammed to fear society. We were lied to when we were told two weeks to flatten the curve, and now we are demanding that you reject this new normal and get back to life as it should be. Open the schools, bars, theaters, and everything else without a reduced capacity or insane restrictions. Individual liberty allows us to decide if we want to partake in society or not. We don't need tyrants telling us how much distance we need between us or that our schools need to meet certain safety standards to open. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next speaker that I have listed is Davina Forrester.
Ms. Forrester has been entered into the meeting.
She needs to unmute. I guess we're gonna have some instructions on unmuting with the link.
I will make note of that. I have sent her a request to unmute her line.
Good evening, Ms. Forrester. Ms. Forrester?
Hello.
Hi. Would you please give us your name, your city of residence, and you have three minutes to comment.
Yes, my name is Davina. I am in Kingman, Arizona. And I, you know, I've already sent a lot of letters. You guys have all had them. You know how I feel about it. I didn't prepare a speech or anything, but my main concern is the masks being very dangerous for the health of everybody. I've sent you the numbers. You know that it depletes oxygen. We did the study on the cloth masks, and it clearly went into the danger zones against OSHA regulations. And my son will not walk into the school because I am not going to put a mask on his face. I have told the school that when I registered him for the online. They want him to come in for testing now, and he's not gonna go if he has to wear a mask. And this is the damage your mandate is causing our community. You're dumbing down our children. You're putting fear into our children, and they're our future. They're who is gonna be sitting in your seats one day, and I do not want them anything like you guys. We're patriots, and we're standing up for human rights. We're standing up for God-given oxygen that you do not have the right to take away from us. And that's all I want to say to the public. Please do not wear those masks. Do not put them on. You are all health exempt, every one of you. Thank you. Goodbye.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Annie Dillon.
Mayor, Ms. Dillon is not logged in. We have one last participant.
Rebecca Williams?
Correct, and I will admit her now.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams has been entered into the meeting, and I sent her a request for her to unmute.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Williams? Can you hear us? We can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you, Danny.
Yes, would you please give us your name, your city of residence, and we'll have three minutes to give us your comments.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Williams, and I'm in the city of Kingman. So, my comment pertains to the state of our nation and the actions of those in charge. In elected leadership positions, we would expect that leaders perform their due diligence without bias when something so unpolitical such as public health becomes a topic of controversy. Instead, we get leaders who blindly follow official narratives. If I am wrong, and you have all done research on both sides with an open mind, it is just as disappointing that you don't have the common courtesy to answer or apply to your constituents in some way. The mayor can have her word and her way without ever seeming to need to answer to anyone. Without the, with those actions, we can't wonder why a four-year mayoral term wasn't approved. Furthermore, council members, if any of you have disagreed with any local action that has occurred due to this pandemic, it is incredibly disappointing that you've declined to speak up. But in the late, they never go. But I just don't get it. If you can't see something weird is going on here, I think in the eyes of the people, you're either too incompetent to do your job or simply going along in your place of problem. Death data for two thousand nineteen in Mojave County, twenty-two hundred and seventy-four died in the month of July. This year is three hundred and ninety-four. That's a one hundred and twenty increase from last year. Interestingly, though, only sixty-two were deaths as a result of COVID. Did the death increase to the other half due to the result of the lockdown? How many suicides, overdoses? How many have succumbed due to the result of the lockdown measures? By complying, by not asking questions, you are complicit to each one of those deaths. According to the data, the flu, pneumonia, and chronic respiratory diseases have always contributed highly to death toll among all age groups. Chronic respiratory disease in particular being one of the leading causes. Hell, you fight for the city of Kingman. Hell, you connect to a local hospital with other clinicians and doctors across the country to actually have recovered most, if not all, of their patients, elderly included. There's entire legions of hundreds of doctors out there pleading with the nation that they have a cure, then with the president, and they're being censored on social media. You don't think there's anything weird about that? Until we can do some of these things and be real leaders, I hope you look forward to hearing from me every time coming from now on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Annie, does anyone else? Does anyone else show up?
I do not have any of the additional registered participants in the waiting room at this time.
Okay, then that concludes the call to the public. The next order of business is the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do any of the council members want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Items A through L.
Mayor, before you take a motion, I believe it would be appropriate to recognize that Councilor Watkins has joined the meeting.
Welcome, Councilor Watkins. Yes, I see you. Okay, thank you for being here, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so now I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda item A through L.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask that all in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Actually, there is no older-new business this time, so we're going to move into the department reports, which include the NACFED Management Services Annual Update as our first department report. Chief Rhodes, I guess?
Actually, I'll kick it off, Mayor.
Okay.
So, it's hard to believe that it's actually been a year since we've been talking about this and then actually entered into the agreement to provide leadership services for NACFED. We wanted to make sure, as part of our commitment to the city council, to really come back and tell you how that service agreement has been going. And that, I guess, before we, I have asked Chief Rhodes to talk about the progress that we've made in this agreement. Just wanna say that I really appreciate Chief Rhodes and his team and the professionalism that they bring to the table every single day. And I think as you watch and listen to his presentation, that you will see the great things that we've been able to do with this partnership. So, Chief Rhodes, go ahead and walk us through what's been going on.
So, thank you, City Manager Foggan, Mayor Miles, and Council. Hopefully, you see my screen okay, and you can hear me okay. I was, me and Annie practiced this so we could get it right. So, I will say she lectured me quite a bit today. So, so, quick update. I know we have other things on the agenda still left to talk, so I kinda wanna walk through and then leave any time for any questions or anything that you may have out there. And City Manager Foggan stayed it quite well. I think to say that it's been a year, only a year, because of what has transpired out there. And the one thing that we didn't have in place, if you look at the date, August sixth, two thousand nineteen, that's when, that's when we started out there. The one thing that we did not have when we started this was really any background out there. So, we really, on August seventh, we started from ground zero. And really kind of, we knew some things, but we sure didn't know everything. And that's where me and my team have hit the ground running, to say the least. And it's been a very furious sprint for the last year. I often compare this to whenever I came to Kingman. Now we have the model. That model works in Kingman. We know the service level and everything that we provide to the city of Kingman. So, the analogy of pulling the sheet across the rest of bed has been used quite a bit because that's exactly what we're doing. We're taking what works here, adapting it to the district, and making that happen. And this, and this agreement puts that in place. We have multiple agreements with the district. And I've said it multiple times before that no one really knows where each jurisdiction starts and ends when it comes to this magic line on Gordon. And the level of service should not change. It doesn't matter which truck shows up or which patches on the side of the door that they're getting exceptional service. And I think we've really seen that. So, I provided a lot of information on these slides. I won't dare cover all that by any means, but I wonder, I wanna kinda show exactly what that, what that starts with. And it starts with kind of the overview of how we ran it. And even though the agreement says Fire Chief and Management Services, it's city of Kingman, and that our entire team has a role. If, for instance, in this organizational chart, Assistant Chief of Operations for Kingman is Jack Yeager. He's serving the same role for the district. We're just treating it as a different division. Assistant Chief Eaton oversees our facilities and fleet. He's doing the exact same thing out there. And so, it works seamlessly. Even our Battalion Chiefs of Training and EMS are, again, that shared service out there that's making this work. And that's one thing the district didn't have. And that's one thing the district didn't have, is that administrative support, that they have a dedicated training division and a dedicated EMS piece. Even our Battalion Chiefs of Operations are, are working so well with their peers to make that integration of training and Incident Command and those type of things into, I hate to say, what we do here in Kingman even better. So, so, it's a team effort by all means. So, some of the things that we agreed to do was some assessments and allocation of what they're doing, budget procurement policies. That has been a challenge, as I'll get into a couple of other places. But overall, making what we do here in Kingman work in the district. And that's been, that's been our goal from day one. I just want to kind of give an overview of the district. And when we really think about the district, the district has nine stations. And over the last 10 to 12 years, their budget has decreased because of property valuations. So, their level of service has definitely changed. But if you look at 4,400 calls a year for basically three and a half stations, that's what they run. That's a busy group considering how much mass they cover. Similar to us, they run a majority of EMS calls. Their busiest areas are right in town for the two, the two fire stations in town, one up on northern and then one out by the airport. Those are by far the busiest. But the other one is Valley Vista that's staffed all the time with, with two people. That's the other one. And simple distance dictates that we, we need to staff that station. Call volume, again, Station 31 there on northern is by far one of the busiest, even in comparison to our stations here in Kingman. It's a busy station. So, that's something to, to think about. One area of concern out there was, was total response time. And that's something even here in Kingman six years ago was a, was a, a project that we worked very diligently on. Because when you think about response, there's only so many things that firefighters actually control. This is one of those, though. When you travel, you still got to go a set distance. You got to abide by traffic laws and do those things. So, some of those things are out of, out of our control. One thing that we do control is turnout time. And I can tell you this, when we started in August of last year, that was three and almost four minutes from the time the alarm would go off to the time the firefighters got on the truck to respond. You can see here, that averages two minutes and three seconds. But I can tell you, in, in July, it's down to 137. So, that's, if you think about the total response time, that total cycle time, that change in itself has taken two and a half, two to two and a half minutes off of the response time for those units to get on scene. That is a tremendous change. That in itself, I take a lot of priority in those guys, the awareness, looking at numbers and making those changes to get from, from where they are, training, checking trucks, doing whatever else they're doing onto the trucks to respond. So, that's simply awareness and sharing information. One of our other big tasks out there is training. And you can see, just in a short amount of time, and you got to consider that the first two or three months, four months, was really assessing where they are, what they needed. 6,335 hours doesn't seem like a lot, but start inviting that out by 21 people in eight months, that starts, that starts adding up and looking really good. And working them in with multiple, multi-company training and training on our grounds. And again, doing what we're doing, implementing our annual training plan out there, specialized to them, works a lot. Some of the specific things that, that we've worked on was finance out there, making sure we adhere to good procurement policies. Unlike the city where we have Tina watching, watching everything and really overseeing that, it's our administrator, our administrative assistant, and myself that really look over this. And we manage it daily to go through this. We've established some billing processes and other things that were in place for wildland, out of district, all those type of things, our procurement. Our audit policy, process went very successful last year, and we got that coming up this month as well. Something as simple as changing the way that they're, they're doing their scheduling and their payroll from a manual system that was basically on a desk calendar to using an automated system such as Alatech. So, there's checks and balances there on multiple levels was, was huge. Fleet facilities is a, is a huge factor down there that continues to be a challenge for us. So, the frontline engines need work. And so, that was a thing that we really had to focus on. We still continue to focus on today is managing their fleet to make sure they have good resource to respond in and live in. Some of the other accomplishments, simply, some of our auto aid agreements, establishing SOPs. They had no standard operating procedures when we, when we took over. So, we basically rolled out our policy manual, which isn't, I would say it's a great novel to read. There's, there's lots of policies to cover everything. And I'll give it to those personnel out there as they took that on. And with any organization, there's going to be some resistance. But now, it's, it's, they're wanting it. We just got through with our Mission Vision Values meeting out there, and the ownership they have out there is tremendous right now. So, that was huge, changing some things. Again, safety, health, and awareness, making sure they have annual physicals, mirroring our processes. So, we just kind of rolled that out out there. PP Extractor, something such as Clean Gear or Cancer Awareness Program, we're starting that in place out there, and it's, it's huge. It's things that we're doing. Some of the, the annual processes that you would think, well, those are annual requirements. They simply weren't happening. And if they were happening, they weren't documenting. And then, so that's the thing that, that we bring, is those projects and those processes to where we button those up pretty tight and make sure it's happening. Training goes without a doubt. It's one of our, our strong suits that we really focus on out there. Incident Command and some of those things. They have individuals that are not certified as firefighter one and two. We've changed that. And we actually have three of their individuals that are going to test in the next couple of months. COVID has kind of held us back on that. But they'll test. And so, they're all firefighter one and two certified out there, which is, again, a big, big factor for us. Something as simple as narc lockers on all the apparatus to make sure our drugs are compliant and, and secure at all times. It's some of those things that I'd say that we take for granted here in Kingman, but it's things that we had to get in place, even on the EMS side of the house. And EMS is what we do every day. So, summary, and I know that's brief and that's short, but in summary, I'd say the level of service has increased, while the liability has decreased. And that, that's a huge thing, all the way from, from the financial obligations and those type of things, the administrative processes. We've really focused on ensuring that, I'd say, we, we take our practices here from Kingman, not only in the fire department, but what we do with procurement and other things to make sure the district is doing those things. I would say we're doing exactly what we said we were going to do. When City Manager talks about it, it's already been a year. And I would say it's already been a year. I would phrase that a little bit differently, because we've worked. I would put it in dog years. It seems like much longer. We still have a long journey to go because that cultural institutional change doesn't happen in a year. We got a lot of work to do. And, and that's kind of where we're going. Priorities for next year, we got strategic planning coming up up there. We have a few other things. The, the work on 2600 is their remodel of a fire station has been approved. That's taken us 11 months from where it was to, to now. Construction will start on that in the next couple of weeks, which is a huge accomplishment, because I've been working on that for, for so long and to dot every i and cross every t to get it to where it could actually go out to bid successfully and then make that happen has been a, has been an accomplishment. So, I'd say when it comes to the management agreement, we got a lot of work to do, but we're doing exactly what we said we were going to do. And I think we stabilized some things. We've definitely increased the level of service. And I'd open it up to any questions that, from the council that I could answer.
Counselors, any questions or comments for Chief Rhodes? Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we are aware of fires that have been taking place, obviously, in the mountains, but we've also had some here in the Kingman and New Kingman area. And have you noticed a, a really more unified, tied and effective approach and how, how our units are working together with Kingman and NACFed?
Well, I, I would, I would hit on that. So, calls, calls across the region are up. And it's not, we just had this discussion today. For the month of, for the last month in August, we hit 800 calls, which for us, 800 emergencies a month, that's, that's pushing us a little bit. But it's not just one thing. You can contribute heat and all these other things. It's just been busy. The last couple of months have just been busy for us. And I think that's across the whole region as we look at numbers and call volume. But I would say this, if you go out, there was a fire out in NACFed about three weeks ago. It's a Thursday afternoon. I hate to say that I was sneaking out to the golf course until I saw the plume of smoke and decided I'm going out there. So, when I got there, we actually did a third alarm on that. And what, what happened was, it was so hot, it was 190 degrees that afternoon. One of their battalion chiefs was in command, but I had our two training chiefs there. I had myself. Jack Yeager was running kind of the logistics operations piece, coordinating the, that third alarm in. I had Keith Eaton covering the city as, as command. That's something that doesn't happen very often. So, that mutual benefit of that, of that agreement, it works seamlessly. Talking the same language, our, our number one party is safety, and that has carried over. We are making sure we're safe in that some of the initial operations for that group, on their initial response, they didn't, they didn't operate the same way. They do now. And I would say it's working better than it has in a long, long time. And the buy-in, that institutional change is occurring, and it's happening. We talk about it every day. I had command staff with them today, as well as command staff for us. And it's just that seamless, that discussion, as we continue to strive and be better out there. So, when it comes to mutual aid and the occurrence of fires, yeah, we're busy, but I think it's working better than ever when it comes to that relationship.
Thank you, Chief. I was really thinking of the fire that you mentioned there because I was so thankful, as we all were, that given the heat of the, the fire and the temperatures around in the city, it was wonderful that there were no real casualties from that.
Well, I would, I would add one other thing, and that is the, the mutual aid that we have in the county. Again, that's something we've worked very hard. And, and that we, and when you can call a third alarm and get units from Yucca, Lake Havasu, Desert Hills, Bullhead, Golden Valley, it goes without saying, Mojave Valley, it goes without saying, there's some good stuff happening when it comes to mutual aid and those discussions and those responses. It's, it's a nice resource to have in your back pocket that we give like we get. And then, it's a good relationship to have throughout the county right now.
Fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, unless, oh, yes.
I, I, can I just make a comment? I want to thank you, Chief Rhodes and your staff sincerely for everything. You're doing a great job, and just God keep you guys safe.
Yes.
Thank you for everything.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, then we'll move on to the next department report, which is Pension Tax Obligations. Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's, it's a riveting conversation that this Kinga is going to walk you through. We, we felt that this was important to cover with you sooner than later as I read an email one afternoon that really got my attention. I said, immediately reached out to Tina and said, can this really be accurate? And so, we've had a couple of meetings with Stiefel. And after those meetings, and confirmed some of the information that, that we had read regarding these pension tax obligations and some of the, and the option that may be viable, we really wanted to share with you. So, Ms. Tina's got a little presentation and wants to just talk to you about that. So, Ms. Tina.
Thanks, Mr. Foggan. And I don't have a presentation. I will not bore you with that. I just wanted to share a little bit of information on the pension tax obligation. So, over the past couple of years, as the unfunded liability has hovered over us and the large burden that, that opposes on our general fund, we have inquired, as you have also inquired, about whether or not we can actually issue debt to pay off that unfunded liability. And as Mr. Foggan said, we were under the impression, and whether that was misunderstanding or misinformed, that we could not issue debt to pay off that debt. However, what we believe the intent when we were told that we can't do that was more that it, the numbers would not pencil out. And the numbers would not pencil out because of the interest rates that they were pre-COVID. However, over the past few months, there are more than 20 cities and towns and counties in the state who are actually looking at this option as a viable option. Interest rates are at their historic lows. And we all know the burden that all of us are facing with the unfunded liability. And so, many of the cities, cities, towns, and counties in the state are looking to this as an option. And as a matter of fact, the city of Flagstaff actually just closed a sale on, on debt. They issued, I, they had $116 million actually in unfunded liability. They were only 40% funded. They are now 100% funded, and it's going to save the city millions of dollars over the next 20 years. And so, because of that, our next step, when we read this case study and started talking to Stiefel about this, we felt it was important to share it with you as it has been an inquiry. And us as well, we felt it, it is a, it is a very viable option considering the interest rate market that we're currently in. And so, unless there is dissension this evening, we would like to take those next steps as far as entering into agreement with Stiefel and bringing that to you to approve so that they can begin to provide us with advice and begin to put some structuring of some financing terms together and then bring that back to the council for your review and discussion and input. As it's, it's complex, and there's a lot to it, but at least get that ball rolling.
Thank you, Director Moline. Thank you, Director Moline. And I know we can't open this up for council action, but I guess um I would ask, are there any comments from the counselors regarding this issue?
Hey, Miles, this is Vice Mayor Lingensfelder. I would have a question if I may for Finance Director Moline. Uh Tina, thank you for the information. That's certainly new uh information. Um is that something that all of these cities are looking at as, as a one-time thing? Or how does that really work? And what does it do to the city's overall position? Is it something that we can do one time and then we can't do it again? I guess I just have a whole bunch more questions about that.
Yeah, and that's gonna be, it's gonna be helpful to have people come in to answer many of those uh questions. However, as far as what it would do for the cities currently, you know that every year we've got that fluctuating PSPRS rate that continues to increase and we're, and we're dipping in cash reserves. Anytime that you're issuing debt, you're levelizing that payment. And so many of the cities are looking to fully fund their, their unfunded liability. And then also there are some strategies with the, uh for City of Flagstaff, for instance, some strategies to take into account when you're borrowing the money to kind of hedge what those future assumptions and the impacts that they might have on us as cities down the road in the event that the PSPRS system doesn't meet the assumptions that were used whenever we put that debt together. So those are great questions, Vice Mayor Lingensfelder, and uh we would definitely want to bring that as a discussion point when we bring people in.
It's exciting news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Uh Mayor, I would just like to say, uh since this is the topic that has kept me awake at night for the last several years, um since I found out about it, I'm really looking forward to hearing more um and if this is a possible solution or just helps us to plan how we're gonna pay this off. I can't wait. Thank you, Tina. And, and Ron, you too.
Any others?
Thank you, Councilman.
Uh well, I, I add my um endorsement of this approach because you're right. Uh interest rates are, are amazingly low. And if there's a way to stabilize these payments, that would be a thing to our advantage. So I think the council looks forward to uh what you bring forth for discussion.
Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Um, okay, and then the final department report is the COVID nineteen public meeting process.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh Vice Mayor Lingensfelder in our last meeting had asked uh for kind of an update of where, where we've been and where we're going with uh public meetings. And um I don't know how many of you watched the League of Cities opening uh kind of opening keynote speakers, but it was consisted of the ASU, U of A and Northern Arizona um college presidents. And all three of the presidents of those colleges talked about really looking at new ways of doing things that we never considered before. And this, what we're engaged in right now, it, it is that great experiment that uh we never thought, I never thought prior to global pandemic that we would be holding council meetings via Zoom. Matter of fact, prior to the COVID nineteen, I didn't even know about Zoom. I'm go-to meeting maybe, but anyway, um so we've been doing our meetings virtually as, as you all know. We started out, when it first started, by trying to do this with phone calls. And uh that was very difficult, incredibly difficult for people to hear, participate in. Um and so we, to be honest, if, if there's a, something to be happy about, what we were happy to discover that there was the Zoom opportunities. So we've been doing our meetings virtually. And um when it became clear that we were gonna be doing Zoom meetings uh and the pandemic was gonna be around for a while, uh I reached out to the county in early um June. And basically what we were, what I was asking for, what I asked for was the opportunity to use the, for us to go back, we had been there, but to go back to the Board uh of Supervisors Auditorium and be able to conduct our meetings there. And on um June eleventh, uh the board voted to not allow us to, to go back and into their space uh based on the pandemic and the, the desire to not expose um people in the county building to any more visitors than they had to. So we were, we were turned down at that time. Uh since that time, of course, we've continued with our Zoom meetings. And uh the great experiment you saw tonight was public comment that, you know, obviously there's some stuff to be ironed out uh there as well. And you know, I'm, I'm always looking for opportunities in which we can improve our public, uh public meetings, council meetings. This, and also remembering that our council meetings, what we decide here also somewhat affects our commission meetings. Uh and all of our commission meetings have been uh virtual as well. Um so where, where we are right now is I've, I've really tasked the IT department and Annie. We've been working uh together to try to figure out what we can do uh moving forward based on the pandemic requirements, the CDC uh guidelines and the governor's executive orders. And we find ourselves wanting to um hold uh our meetings, go back to what was um was before. And I, I find that increasingly difficult. But uh one of the things that, that we are working on right now is the ability to do a, a live meeting that incorporates Zoom as an option. And uh we're still working out the details on that. Uh our space, our council uh room is, is limited and it does not allow for a lot of social distancing. So as, as we look um at these options, we, obviously we're trying to make sure that the public and um the elected officials and the city team feel safe. Obviously, that's number one priority and that everybody that wants to participate has the opportunity to participate in, in our meetings. And so that, that becomes a challenge for us now. Um as far as remote meetings, the, the, really our two options are the Board of Supervisors Auditorium and our council uh chambers. Uh the public has become accustomed to and the expectation is that when we hold our meetings, that we're broadcasting them and that they, that people can hear them. So remote meetings become an extremely, especially um our council meetings, but this would go to commission meetings as well, is that those, those remote meetings with the camera systems that we have to have in place, as well as the microphone systems, uh would, would end up costing us thousands of, of dollars. And, and the meeting site uh still is, would be unknown. Uh just not a lot of, of large meeting spaces within the city of Kingman. Uh but we are working on, on trying to figure out how to do the live meeting in conjunction with the Zoom meeting and still be able to accomplish some of the social distancing uh requirements and still allow uh public participation at, as they've come to expect from um our, our, the old uh city council way of doing business. And so that's, that's where we are. Uh my hope is, and what we're working towards is that we would have um some kind of mix of open live meeting with uh, with some kind of Zoom capability uh in October is what we're shooting for. Uh again, based on the regulations of the CDC and the governor's executive orders. So that's.
Thank you, Matt.
That's what I have.
Okay, uh well, I'll open it to others, but I would like to first make some comments. Um you, you brought up yesterday's opening session of the LEAP, which I also attended. And it was uh true to me that Dr. Crowe from ASU, their president, gave some really uh, you know, enthusiastic comments about uh the need and for the willingness to adapt and adjust. I think I am quoting him correctly there. And because he said everything, that, that the movement now to advance technology and, and educational models and hea- health models and all of these things, it's moving so fast uh that that advancement is going to continue uh after the pandemic is over. And um new models of work that everyone is adopting. So I think that hybrid that you're talking about has merit. And I also mentioned that today I attended, this is my third Zoom meeting and the other two were both originated in Phoenix. But the first one was the LEAP, which was the Resolutions Committee and the Business Meeting. And what, and, and so we can still even use Zoom more effectively by learning how to vote. They were, but we were all voting on these resolutions and there were lots of people in this meeting from all over the state. Maybe, you know, eighty or so. Well, it's so easy when they, they just put it up on the screen, vote yes, vote no, and you submit it. And then they give you immediate feedback on how the vote went. So that was really impressive. I hadn't seen, I hadn't participated in that before. And then the second meeting was the Arizona Workforce Council. And that was just what you're describing, Ron, which was uh they had a big room with a, maybe five or seven people in it. And that, that was taking place. Everybody else was on Zoom. Pardon me. So I've seen that model kind of at work today and it seemed, it worked very well. Everybody, uh the speakers came on, the presentations were on, videos came on. Um but occasionally you'd be, see the people in the big room, which was a live kind of setting where they were orchestrating this. So I'm glad to hear that we are moving in that direction because um it, it seems to me, based on my experience now, that that kind of works. Any other comments from the council or questions?
Ma'am, this is Vice Mayor Lingensfelder. I would just like to thank Manager Foggan and his staff for sharing the thought process and also their push for, push for adaptation. Um I know for, for many months now, we've had the, the call the public and that's been evolving. But we haven't had really a lot of citizens like a normal meeting poll uh or, or want to comment on one of our agenda items. So uh I think we're sort of evolving that way and I love to see that. And I just want to thank him for uh his work and his staff's hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything? I told, I told Annie today, she's uh becoming the superstar on Zoom to learn, it has a learning curve. And um I think we're getting better and better at it. Um any other comments? Okay, then um that's, that concludes the department reports. Thank you all. Uh we'll move on to announcements by mayor, city council members and city manager. Manager Foggan, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh first update is on the Census twenty twenty effort. Uh we do have people that are checking addresses from the Census Bureau. And there is activity from the, the Census Bureau on gathering and trying to canvas some of the hard to count areas. Again, I want to thank Sylvia Schaefer for her efforts to work with, uh so closely with the Census Bureau and, and their team. So the work continues. We are at seventy-three percent reported. So uh we're very, very happy about that, looking for uh the census takers and the Census Bureau to help us up that number somewhat. So that's kind of my census report. Uh the other piece uh that I just wanted to make everybody aware of, I received a call today from uh the Arizona Department of Housing. And it looks like um they have um received some, some funding to do some homeless veterans housing. That they're looking for us to help partner with the money on. And so uh more to come on that. It was just a phone call that I received today, just out of the blue. Certainly weren't expecting any, anything like that, but I thought that was great news for homeless veterans and an opportunity to house them. Obviously, uh the Arizona Department of Housing is looking for opportunities to protect uh the homeless veterans from um the pandemic and to give them a place where they can stay. And they specifically mentioned being able to be kind of protected from the pandemic. And so more to come on that. I don't know what the details all are yet, but we're, I was really excited to get a call from Kathy. Um don't even know her last name, but uh so that's, that's uh, that's kind of the good news that I have to share. Um I think that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you for sharing that, Manager Foggan. Um, okay, Counselor Watkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. Um as always, I want to thank um, well, the staff reports that we've received tonight from the chief and from Tina and, and Ron. And of course, all those who, who put their time in to do this. I, I understand, yes, that's part of their job, but it is nice to have all that information and to keep us current on what is going on. Um I also appreciate the public comment and I appreciate the work that Ron and staff has done to be able to allow us to have public comment tonight. I appreciate those who commented and especially those who were respectful in the way they commented. Um we saw a mix of everything and, you know, you listen to those more who are respectful, I think, and, and I truly appreciate that. I am reminded of the fact, and this is from a business associate um who has been a mayor in a small town before, back in the Midwest. He now, of course, is, is out here, but he reminded me, reminded me, he's reminded me a number of times and we've talked. And he said, because we're elected officials, we need to be sure to always represent those who have put us uh has elected us and, you know, respect their thoughts and comments. Sometimes they go against what we personally feel and that's the tough decision we have to make as elected officials. And I would remind all of us of that. And um I appreciate all of us that do all the homework that they do on this. So anyway, let's keep on trying to work together and, and get through the, all this of what's going on. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wade.
I have no announcements today. Uh thank you, Madam Mayor.
Certainly. Counselor Scott Staley.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Counselor Melo Keener.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Lingensfelder.
Madam Mayor, I would just uh say thank you to Counselor Watkins' comments. I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And um I think I have nothing further either. So uh let's move on to council requests for future reports and updates. Do we have any council requests for future reports and updates? Okay, there are no council reports for, or requests for reports and updates. So uh I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn this meeting tonight.
Thank you. Do a second.
I'll second.
The motion is second to adjourn. All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Vice Havitt, good evening, everyone. Meetings adjourn.
Have a good evening.